But this is the first time we biked over from Westwood and it was really nice.
This Siclavia route connected the areas of MacArthur Park to the Mariachi Plaza in Boyle Heights, to Chinatown, and to the African-American Firefighter Museum. Grand Park downtown served as the main hub. With Siclavia events being so successful, officials hope to raise more funds to keep them going beyond Los Angeles.
We want to expand so people can experience it all over LA County. We've been doing it mostly in LA City, but we want to bring the Siclavia love all over the place.
And from the looks of these colorful and creative rides, and the smiles on these faces, the Siclavia love is definitely in the air. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rochelle Goell for LA This Week.
Officials say while Siclavia is best known for being bike-friendly, it has become increasingly popular for those on foot. The event originated in Bogota, Columbia. And staying on the topic of walking, those who hiked the trails at a park in San Pedro may not know what it took one man to get the trails there. And now that man has been posthumously honored with the dedication of the trail in his name. Ray Patricio was a former park advisory board and neighborhood council member, and by all accounts, an all-out community activist.
Ray was one of the driving forces behind the refurbishment of the stream and the trails in the canyon. And Ray also worked with Wreckin Parks to bring a goat herd one year to clear vegetation.
And when it came to improvements at his beloved Peck Park in San Pedro, Ray Patricio was undeterred as he worked with the Department of Recreation and Parks and the Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council in making the refurbishment of the trails a priority. The project was completed in May of 2011.
At that point in time, we on the council said, "We want to name the trails after you, Ray." And Ray said, "No." He was adamant. We pushed it. He was adamant. No. Then came the day of the ceremony to dedicate the new refurbished canyon. And Ray looked at me and he said, "I wish I'd let you do it." So, today, I am so pleased to be here and see his wish fulfilled.
The Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council pushed to have the trails named in Patricio's honor after he passed away in August of 2012. Oftentimes, Patricio and Parks officials butted heads, but the idea to rename the trails received the city's full support.
Ray and the city of Los Angeles didn't exactly see eye all the time, as you all know, but there was a mutual understanding that in order for us to get things done, we had to work together. It's my honor to welcome you to the Ray Patricio Trails at Peck Park.
To the delight of those who knew Patricio, his son Jim Patricio affectionately channeled his father and what he would say if he were here today.
The first thing he'd say if he came here today was, "Where's the restroom at? They should have restrooms for everybody around this place." It's the first thing he'd say. Because that's all he would tell me. "Where can people go to the bathroom? How can those kids go down that canyon when there's no restroom for them? Gee, I don't believe it." But anyway, my dad would be very honored.
It's very meaningful for us because he put a lot of heart and soul into refurbishing, having the canyon refurbished, and he was very proud of it.
While Patricio may have been ambivalent about receiving recognition, his family and his beloved community are grateful for this lasting tribute. Peck Park is located at West Upland and Dunn Streets in San Pedro. The city celebrates the law enforcement community with an annual parade. An animal rights advocate receives accolades from city leaders. And beware of where you leave your gym bag. A gym thief is on the loose. These stories and more in City Beat. As he does every year, council member Tom Labonge hosted Ten Four Day on October 4th with the parade of vintage cars, with the goal of honoring the women and men in uniform, as well as those who portray them on screen. A special proclamation was presented to Tom Williams, the producer of the hit TV show Adam 12, a police drama that aired on NBC in the late '60s to the mid-'70s.
We started with like maybe 10 or 15 cars. Eric Estrada came the first year, and by the fourth and fifth year, we had like 30 cars, and it was out of control like you saw today.
This year, the 10th anniversary of Ten Four Day boasted close to 40 vintage cars, which descended upon Hollywood Boulevard, with a brief stop at the walk of famed star of Broderick Crawford, who starred in the 1950's television show Highway Patrol. Kathy Reardon was honored by the LA City Council recently for her service on the Los Angeles Animal Services Commission for more than three mayoral administrations. She left the department earlier this year. Her mother and father, former LA Mayor Richard Reardon, were on hand at the Van Nuys City Hall for the special occasion.
You've made our city, our family proud. I have only one gripe, that you're much more popular in the Valley than I was.
We haven't had an activist so passionate about animals and animal rights and protecting those who can't protect themselves, quite frankly, and has done so much in the city of Los Angeles.
I will continue to do whatever I can for the department. My life has always been animal.
Kathy Reardon was the one who proposed the city's first spay neuter ordinance, which charged pet owners who didn't fix their pets more for pet licenses. Detectives from the Los Angeles Police Department's West LA Division need help identifying this man they say committed at least eight thefts from Equinox Fitness and LA Fitness in the West LA Van Nuys and Hollywood areas. It is believed that the same suspect is responsible for all of these incidents. Anyone with information identifying the suspect is asked to contact LAPD West LA Theft Detective Tiffany Mastin at 310-444-1565. It was covered in overgrown brush and unsightly weeds, but now an important intersection in Los Feliz has received a major facelift. Yana K. has more.
The next time you drive by the Vermont Triangle, you'll notice that the median has undergone a transformation. What was once an overgrown jungle has now become a clean, wide-open space for all to enjoy.
Here we're today because people care. And that's the great thing about our neighborhood. People care.
Officials say the site, which sits between Prospect Avenue, Vermont Avenue, and Hollywood Boulevard, is an important part of the neighborhood because it serves as a gateway to Los Feliz and East Hollywood.
This is so beautiful, and it increases, it'll increase the use because it increases the visibility. People will be able to see. It'll make it easier for, you know, public safety and the police to keep an eye on making this area safe.
City officials and organizations, including the East Hollywood Business Improvement District and local businesses, work together to revitalize the pocket park.
Our mission at the medical center and at Kaiser Permanente is to have, create healthy communities. That means the people that live here feel physically and mentally healthy.
After a big cleanup, officials decided on a desertscape design, bringing in decomposed granite and nearly 30 drought-tolerant plants. Now that the project is complete, the Hollywood-Los Angeles beautification team will be maintaining the landscaping here. In the meantime, officials plan on rededicating and re-landscaping four more medians in the neighborhood. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
To open up the site even more, council member Labonge moved the existing taxi zone closer to the Vermont Sunset Metro Station. In this week's list of things to do, an opera like nothing you've ever seen. A hike at Griffith Park, and the LA Zoo prepares for Halloween with Boo at the Zoo. It's an opera without a stage, and it's appropriately called Invisible Cities Opera. The stage and the set is the life of Union Station. This unique experience takes place Saturday, October 19th at 7:00 PM, with other performances available throughout the month. Performers will be roaming Union Station downtown, and you, their audience members, surrounded by passengers and passersby, wearing a state-of-the-art pair of Sennheiser wireless headphones, will be able to experience the opera happening all around you, live. Union Station is located at 800 North Alameda Street. Go to invisiblecitiesopera.com to find out more about tickets and how to take part in this truly unique performance. Ranger Ernie Ibarra will be leading a hike on Saturday, October 19th at Griffith Park. Meet at 8:00 AM at the Griffith Park Ranger Station Visitor Center, located at 4730 Crystal Springs Drive. The hike will be six miles to Vista del Valle and will conclude at around noon. Remember to dress accordingly, wear hats, sunscreen, and bring water or snacks. And note that hikes are always canceled in the event of rain. For more information, you can email RangerErnie@ernie.ibarra@la-city.org. And with Halloween around the corner, the LA Zoo will be hosting its annual Boo at the Zoo event two weekends in a row, starting with Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The spooky but safe family festivities include jack-o'-lantern carving demonstrations, fun photo opportunities, and eerie crafts. Check out the creepy creature encounter at the Winnicke Family Children's Zoo, then take in a live Halloween show in the Adventure Theater. And of course, trick-or-treat for candy as you roam the zoo. The zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. All activities are free to GLAZA members and with paid zoo admission. Go to lazoo.org for details. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Cat and dog lovers in Eagle Rock came together recently to promote pet adoption. Yana K. takes us there.
This cute canine is looking for a loving family to take him home during the first-ever Eagle Rock Adopt a Pet Day.
We came to support the Humane Society because we love animals, and we've adopted animals ourselves, and, you know, each animal deserves a home.
The event was organized by members of the Eagle Rock community, who share a deep concern for the welfare of all animals.
I lost my dog one evening, and when I went to the animal shelter and I saw how many animals were there, I decided to try to help.
The event also raised awareness about how dog owners can keep their pets happy and healthy.
One of the main reasons that dogs have a problem, it can be discovered from the odor that comes out of their mouth. So we need to pay attention to the oral hygiene of the dog or other animals.
According to city officials, events like these have helped reduce the number of animals that are euthanized each year. I'm Yana K. for LA This Week.
The Adopt a Pet Day was put on by the Los Angeles Police Department Northeast Area and LA Councilmember Jose Huizar. It has served as a backdrop for many weddings, the fountain at the Exposition Park Rose Garden, but it had to shut down to undergo some extensive work and is once again drawing locals and tourists to this popular garden. It's an urban oasis that attracts thousands of visitors a year, the Exposition Park Rose Garden. And part of the experience of visiting the popular garden is the garden's centerpiece, this fountain. After some infrastructure work to correct some operating issues, the fountain is being rededicated for all to enjoy once again.
There's also a tunnel here that leads to the center of the fountain. The tunnel was refurbished too, the lighting, the piping, the surface, there's a new bench.
The $398,000 project also included a new waterproofing system, installation of new piping and nozzles, and the replacement of the concrete seating wall around the fountain. While this refurbishment is well-deserved, the fountain and the garden have faced some challenging times in the city's history.
It was threatened to close down during the Great Depression. It served as a green space during two Olympic Games, and even survived over the threat of turning it over to become a practice field, NFL practice field, I guess, during the days when the Coliseum was in play.
The Rose Garden officially opened to the public in 1928 and was considered the largest garden in the United States. In 1991, the garden was listed in the National Register of Historic Places. While the city of Los Angeles has managed the garden since the mid-'50s, only in 2009 did it own the garden as a result of a land exchange. Today, the garden and its fountain still impress, serving as the backdrop for hundreds of weddings and photo shoots.
The Rose Garden has over 15,000 rose bushes of more than 100 varieties of roses.
And if you'd like to pay a visit, you better do so soon. The garden is close to the public from January 1st to March 15th of each year for annual maintenance. The exposition Rose Garden is located at 701 State Drive and is open daily from 9:00 AM to sunset. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. If I could ask everyone to take their seats. It is Tuesday, October 15th. I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. So why don't we go through the calendar? And then we'll continue with our day. With that said, would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caress, Gracorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Weston, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay. Madam Clerk, does Mr. Bonin have on a tie today? You don't have to answer that question. Anyway, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bonin moves. Mr. Buscayino seconds, next.
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Labange moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise and we'll be led in our flag salute by Mr. Fuentes.
Everybody would please place their right hand over their heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. What's our next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, there's a request by member to continue Item 2 to October 18th.
Without objection, that'll be the day. I mean, that'll be the order. Next.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Item 1 is an item notice for public hearing, and there is a card on this item.
Then let's hold that item and move on to, what, Items 2 through 20?
Yes, Items 3 through 20 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, Members specials, Members seeing none, then let's prepare to... Mr. O'Farrell.
Items 7 and 9 special, please.
Okay, we'll hold 7 and 9 for Mr. O'Farrell. If we could prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you.
And Mr. President, the ordinances will be held up for one week, if not reconsidered.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes.
Sorry, Mr. President, number 29 special, please.
Which one?
29.
29. All right, we're getting to Item 29 now, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so let's hold 29 special for Mr. Fuentes. Do we have cards? Because without objection, these items are now before us.
Cards on Items 26, 27, and 28.
Okay, let's... Members specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
On the supplemental agenda, Items 30 and 31 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
No cards.
Members specials, 30, 31? Okay, seeing none, let's prepare to vote on those two items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. And Mr. President, excuse me for Item 21, also that's an ordinance, and that will be held up for one week, if not reconsidered.
Okay, what we're gonna do is reconsider it now. We do have more than 12 members. So what, why don't you read off all of the... Well, which items can we take that we don't have any cards on?
Items 3, 4, 5, 6, and 21.
Okay, well, let's vote on reconsideration of those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's now actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, that leaves us with how many ordinances left on the desk?
One, Item 7.
How many cards on Item 7?
Item 7 was called special by Councilman O'Farrell.
Well, you know what, Mr. O'Farrell? I'm gonna look to Ms. Martinez. See if we want to move forward with today's very important presentation. So, Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours. If I could have Bresia come up here and sit with me. He was down. And we will begin shortly. Please show a little patience.
Thank you very much. Another big round of applause for our mariachi, gracias. Colleagues, today, I'm happy to stand here and celebrate the work of... The great work of our local Latinas. People from around the world have made Los Angeles their home. Our city is made up of many diverse and distinct neighborhoods. It is this diversity that makes Los Angeles such a wonderful city. One where we can celebrate our very many cultures. Just last Friday, we gathered to celebrate Filipino Heritage Month. And over the past month, we have celebrated and recognized the rich culture and traditions of Latinos. I can think of no better way to commemorate Latino Heritage Month than by recognizing the accomplishments and positive impacts of Latinas throughout the city of Los Angeles. Today, I'm excited to stand here and recognize an amazing group of women who are helping shape their communities. Whether they are organizing in their neighborhoods, operating local businesses, or getting involved in their children's education. These women are making great things happen in their communities. We must showcase them. We must harness their current leadership and not only thank them for their service today, but continue to encourage them to take the next step. I challenge all of you to ask yourselves, what can we do more to encourage more women to become leaders? It is my honor to introduce my honoree this morning. Her name is Yvette Core. Can you please stand up? Yvette is currently... Yvette is currently... She serves as the 31st District President of the State PTA. The 31st District serves six councils, 110 PTA/PTSA units in the San Fernando Valley and San Linto-Hanga areas of Los Angeles Unified School District. And she volunteers countless hours on behalf of PTA. PTA is a great example of women acting locally to better their community. At the time PTA was founded, women were not allowed to vote. The founders represented women of imagination and courage. They had a simple idea to improve the lives of... Improve their lives and the future of all children. They understood the power of individual action. Worked beyond the accepted barriers of their day and took action to change the world for all children. This is exactly the kind of leadership that we need to celebrate today. Women taking charge in their communities to improve the lives of those they care about. Yvette has been involved with PTA for over 10 years. Becoming... Beginning in 2006, when her son was a student at Cantor Elementary School. She notes that she initially became involved in an effort to improve her school. She saw many parents who had great ideas and visions, but did not know... Did not have the confidence to step up. So she did. And the following year, she was elected president of her school, PTA. She has remained involved because she has personally witnessed the great impact that PTA brings to her school. Bringing classroom rugs to kindergarten classes, classroom supplies that teachers need, school beautification projects for the schools and a common sense and a sense of community. She is proud to share her joy, enthusiasm, and passion that the members of all PTA have. Noting that although people see PTA as a group of women who socialize and have coffee, all these efforts involved a lot of shared purpose and positively impacting the lives of the children that go to their schools. Since then, she has climbed the ranks of organized... Of the organization to the role of president of the 31st District. By the end of her term, she would like for the people to understand what PTA is really worth. The organization has the ability to help advance local and state national laws to improve the education, health, and safety of all children. And while individual chapters support different programs, PTSA works tirelessly for our children. In addition, Yvette and her husband are current local business owners operating a fugitive and child abduction recovery business in our district. Assisting law enforcement agencies, including LAPD, the Sheriff's Department, and FBI, and retrieving abducted children and bringing their criminals back to the U.S. to face trial. So I want to take the time to thank my friend Yvette for all of the work on behalf of the children in our community. And thank you for all the positive... For being a positive role model and for being such an incredible friend. Congratulations. And I'm gonna ask my colleagues, we can start to my right. Mr. Fuentes, would you like to start us off? Thank you.
Martinez, thank you so much. Good morning, Members, and good morning, children. How are you all feeling today? Oh, we can't hear you. How you feeling? That's right. I'm so glad that you're here today, because today's a very, very special day. Today, we are culminating Latino Heritage Month. Wave to the cameras, guys. And it's really important, because we're honoring real people in Los Angeles. Okay, now I need you to pay attention. Everybody paying attention? Okay. We are honoring very important people today in Los Angeles who have done so much. And so I'm very excited to be able to congratulate my good friend, Nury Martinez. Where's Nury? Nury, wave at the children. Boys and girls, Nury is the only woman on the Los Angeles City Council. So we've gotta make sure that you all are working hard, taking your vitamins, doing your homework, eating your vegetables, so we can have more women and more young people here on the L.A. City Council. But I want to congratulate her today for helping us culminate, I think, a very important festivity here in Los Angeles that recognizes diversity, recognizes achievement, and has culminated, I think appropriately so, with strong Latinas in Los Angeles. I am very excited to honor my honoree, Irene Tovar, who is a dear friend. But more importantly, she is a community hero. She is somebody who has done a tremendous body of work in Los Angeles. She started, and I'm gonna say in 1965, to show that she's very seasoned and experienced, by helping found the San Fernando Valley Neighborhood Legal Services. She's been a member of the Pacoima Enterprise Zone, vice chairman of the Pacoima Coordinating Council, and currently lives in Mission Hills, where she's one of my residents. But she also served the great state of California in the first Brown administration from 1978 to 1981 as a special assistant to the governor. Big round of applause for the first Latina to do that in California. She was also the president of the State Personnel Board from 1975 to 1981. Served a four-year term on the Public Employment Relations Board, overseeing union negotiations at the state's colleges, universities, and higher education system. She's served on numerous boards, but where I had a chance to meet her was when she was the head and director of the Latin American Civic Association, a program that specialized in young people in the Head Start Program. She also served as a board of director on the Rebuild Los Angeles campaign. Irene has been a champion for my community, for the San Fernando Valley, for Los Angeles, and for California. I'm deeply honored today to be able to call her again, as I mentioned, not just a friend, but a community hero, my personal idol in the 7th Council District. She exemplifies service to the nth degree. She does what she needs to and doesn't ever ask for anything in return. She's a real, real champion, and I want you all to give her a big round of applause. Thank you, Irene Tovar, for your service.
Bob? Did you want to say a few words here? Oh, I thought you wanted... Well, we'll just do it, and then I'll call you, Mitch. Go ahead, I got a little confused here. Which happens with regularity.
If I could ask Isela Para to come up? Senior Lead Officer Isela Para is a 15-year veteran of the Los Angeles Police Department. Come on, come on over here. She's been assigned to the West Valley area since 2006. Since 2008, Officer Para has served as a senior lead officer of the South Reseda area in my district. And since becoming the lead officer, Officer Para has been responsible for increasing the number of neighborhood and business watch groups in the community. Her positive relationships and strong community ties have resulted in strong community groups that involve all of the stakeholders in the community. She is a dedicated senior lead officer who maintains constant communication with the community she serves. Her positive working relationship with members of the community, along with the patrol and detective personnel, has set a real example for others as she's worked to improve the quality of life in Reseda, in the 3rd Council District, in the San Fernando Valley, and really in the city as a whole. She's an amazing asset to our city, an amazing person. Whether it's interfacing with the community or taking a lead role in the planning of the annual National Night Out events, which she does wonderfully, her selfless team-first attitude has made her a leader in the community. I can attest to it firsthand. I've seen and worked with her on many issues over the years, both as a council member and before as an assembly member. And for her dedication to the community and to her fellow officers, I'd like to honor her as the Latina Heritage Month honoree from my district. And I wanted to offer you my heartfelt congratulations and give you a... Two things, some orchids. And also a certificate of recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Englander?
Thank you very much. And, Nury, thank you for putting this together today as well. I can't think of a better leader in my district and a friend of our office, Lucia Montano, who has been absolutely incredible. Not only a great family friend, but her resume as a mother, her resume as a business leader, her resume as the head of her household, although her husband's here, he might want to argue that, but I don't think so, is unbelievably impressive. Born in Honduras, Lucia moved to Los Angeles in 1980 and enrolled in school full-time to learn the language. She worked full-time to support herself and her mother while raising three children, although one might argue four, if you know her husband, Nick. Maribel, their son Nicholas and Eduardo. Lucia and her husband Nick managed one of the oldest businesses in Chatsworth, Los Toros Mexican Restaurant. Also the best Mexican food in all of Los Angeles. The best margaritas, I can attest to that. Although I haven't gotten through an entire one yet. As well as this cactus salad that's not on the menu, although she'll kill me for sharing this now, because she makes it special for my wife, Jane. Every time we come in, it's just phenomenal. But has done so much. That doesn't scratch the surface. Because of her community support and loyalty towards their business and their commitment to teach their children citizenship and community pride, they decided to give back to the community by joining the Kiwanis Club of Chatsworth in 1994. And that's where it sort of begins. In 2003, Lucia's husband, Nick, a first sergeant in the U.S. Army Reserves, approaching his retirement as a reserve, was activated and deployed to Iraq. During Nick's deployment, and while still raising two grade school boys and a college girl, managed the restaurant, Los Toros, and found time to be the Kiwanis Club president, volunteering many, many community hours. During her years there and during that time as a community volunteer, Lucia has participated or chaired many other projects, including... And these are ones that she has started and led through fruition in the entire Northwest Valley. Child Safety Days, Community Cleanups, Citrus Sunday, Beach Cleanups, Operation Gratitude, Relay for Life, Beautification of the North Valley Community Services, NVCS, Care Packages for the Troops, Thanksgiving Meals at the Salvation Army, Big Sunday, Breast Cancer Awareness, and many more. It's incredible. Through Los Toros and the Chatsworth Kiwanis, Lucia helps many nonprofit organizations in their own fundraising efforts by donating thousands of meals and thousands of dollars each year. And in fact, Lucia, right after the Chatsworth, the MetroLink train incident, on the first anniversary, we had a Pride Day to celebrate public safety and the first responders. And Lucia stepped up and said, "Let me bring all the food. Let me bring all the volunteers." And did, and showed up with hundreds of people to feed thousands of people. And was incredible, her and Nick and the entire family that showed up to help out. Their golf tournament that she started helped raise money to install air conditioning units at Chatsworth Park Elementary, purchase the new scoreboard at Chatsworth High School, computers for Lawrence Middle School, and the list goes on and on and on. She's remodeled homeless showers for NVCS, provided new windows for the... Yes, a round of applause, thank you. He's used the showers once. Fixed the roof, repaved the courtyard, only once. And has done so much. Lucia Montano is a woman who needs... And she, when she sees a need, she just jumps in and gets started and makes sure it gets done. She rolls up her sleeves and never says no. She's always willing to get her hands dirty and is a tireless advocate for the Northwest San Fernando Valley, for communities, for families, for businesses. And I can't, I can't thank her enough for everything she's done and a great family friend. So it's my honor to present my honoree with a bouquet of flowers and a proclamation as well to say thank you for everything that you do. Thank you. Here, we'll step over to the side here.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. I do want to state that the young people, Mr. Fuentes and all of the council members that are here today... We have 72 4th graders from 6th Avenue Elementary School in the district that I represent. And we have three teachers and six volunteers. If we could give them a round of applause. And when they finish visiting with us, they're gonna have lunch in the Tom Bradley Room upstairs. So... The next member, is it you, Mr. Sadio? Are you up next? You happy to go? Oh, the floor is yours.
Mr. President, I want these young people to know that they... We have the best president of the city council and that they're represented by the very, very best.
Thank you very much. I'll take it. Thank you.
I want to speak about Sandra Figueroa, who is a giant in our community. She is a very dear friend of mine. We got to meet at Roosevelt High School when her and another young man transferred into our school, from other schools. That happens on occasion. We were in the 11th grade, and then these people show up. Both were committed to public service. One used to work here downstairs and very dear friend. But Sandra has distinguished herself. She is the... On the Police Department Commission, she's a police commissioner. And, but she's best known for her work with young people. And I say that in front of these young people, because she has dedicated her life. She's one of these persons considered an overnight success. It just took her 30 years to accomplish that. She has worked at El Centro de Pueblo. And so when it was unpopular to think that we could have a policy of redemption for young people, that when at-risk youth were believed to be the ills... to be the ills, the source of the ills of our society, that when it was believed that there was no hope for them, she committed herself to these young people. She created a program called El Centro de Pueblo focused on at-risk youth through job development, through sports, through leadership training, and has turned around so many lives. She was noted, I recall reading about her 20 years ago in the Los Angeles Times, the reduction in gang violence, the reduction in deaths related to gang violence was extraordinary. It went down to almost nil based upon the work that she was leading. And so she deserves that for so many families whose lives have been saved by her work and her intervention. She is an extraordinary woman. She's a great mother. She is a very special wife. I know her husband. You could hardly find a couple more in love with each other. And she is someone who deserves recognition for what she does for the young men and women of our community. She is a great example of true leadership and she deserves this recognition. Sandra Figueroa.
Let's give Ms. Figueroa a round of applause.
Rough Rider.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Buscaino. And thank you for the good news, I believe it was yesterday, so my 100% adoption rate is still going on strong. Thank you.
Yes, on Friday, it was the Wong family, the daughter of Melissa Wong, who's in my sister's class, that was here on Friday, adopted little Louis from the animal shelter. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino.
For making that happen. Colleagues, it's great, with great joy and pleasure that I introduce you a dear friend of the Wilmington community, of the CD-15 family, Alma Ortiz, who has been chosen CD-15's Honoree for Latinas across Los Angeles in honor of the Latino Heritage Month. And Councilmember Martinez, thank you for your leadership in promoting today's festivities. We love you for that. Alma Rosa Velazquez was born on... Should we tell you the birthday?
No.
Was born on May 27, 1972, in Zacupa, Mexico. To parents, Felipe, how do I do on that? Gil, I... To parents Manuel and Martha Velazquez. Alma is one of seven children, three boys and four girls. At the age of five, Alma lost her father Manuel to cancer, leaving her mother a widow at the age of 29 with seven young children. After the passing of her father, Alma, her mother, and siblings migrated to the United States in 1977 and settled in Wilmington. Alma attended Banning High School, home of the Mighty Pilots, and was a member of the Banning High School Swim Team and Drill Team and graduated in 1991. She married her high school sweetheart, Ignacio Ortiz, on November 6, 1993. Her and her husband have two beautiful children, Andrew and Mandy. Alma worked as a special education teacher at Wilmington Middle School for 13 years. Her love and patience for students with disabilities made her a great asset to the Los Angeles Unified School District Education System. She was able to provide a place of comfort and growth for children with special needs. Alma developed a love for cooking, especially foods that offer healthier options for her family and loved ones. Motivated by losing her father to cancer at an early age, Alma came to know the benefits of green tea and was introduced to the ancient art of brewing loose leaf tea. She opened Ojas Tea House in Wilmington in September of 2008 to encourage the community to make healthier choices in the hope of losing fewer loved ones to diseases that are preventable by making good lifestyle choices. Ojas Tea House, which today sits on Avalon Boulevard in Wilmington, was named the Business of the Year by the Wilmington Coordinating Council in 2009. And my favorite tea at Ojas Tea House is called Energize Me, Paul. Not that I need to be energized, but it's an incredible blend that includes
Yerba mate.
Yerba mate, ginseng, and oolong tea, and coconut milk. It's to die for. It's really yummy. We welcome everyone to come to Ojas Tea House in Wilmington. Ojas Tea House was also named the Business of the Year by the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce in 2012 and our Small Business of the Month in CD-15 in May of 2012. Ojas Tea House, under Alma's direction, supports a number of community events the last several years, and we thank you, Alma, for that. Alma and Ignacio, her husband, suggested the creation of a small business collaborative, formerly known as the Business of Wilmington United Network, to address the growing needs of small businesses in the Wilmington community. They continue to grow this collaborative and incorporate other businesses in the area providing supportive measures to guarantee financial growth for years to come. Alma's family does this incredible work in Wilmington. And we, unfortunately, mom couldn't be with us today, but Alma, I want to thank your mother, who nearly, I mean, she raised you and your siblings and put out some fine products. Your sister, just the other, last Saturday in Wilmington, put the Fall to Literacy with the United Way, which was a huge literacy program that took place in Banning Park. So to Alma, we love you. Congratulations on being chosen, one of our Latinas across Los Angeles awarding. God bless you, we love you. Thank you so much. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, thanks, Nury, for doing this.
All right. Mr. Bynum?
Colleagues, Councilwoman Martinez, thank you so much for organizing this event. I've asked my honorees, friends, and family and coworkers to join us here today because she is someone whose life is about standing in solidarity with those around her, so I want those with her here today. I'm really very pleased to be able to honor today Marlene Mendoza because she's part of the lifeblood of Los Angeles and because she's a community organizer. Marlene is someone who speaks her voice and will not be silenced. She is someone who leads with her heart. She's someone who inspires other people to action, and she's someone who gets things done. Marlene is a server at HMS Host at LAX and is a longtime shop steward with Unite Here Local 11, hence the red shirt and the insignia which is being hidden by the long hair at the moment. And her colleagues call her a true force of nature. As a server at our region's largest airport for the past 25 years, Marlene is one of the many hard-working individuals who not only take care of the thousands of customers who go through that airport a day, but who have the added responsibility of being one of the first people visitors see when they come to Los Angeles. She is one of the greeters and is a face of Los Angeles. Marlene takes that role very, very seriously, which is why she became very active in her union, so she can help make sure that those informal greeters to our city are paid fair wages and are treated with respect by their employers. Marlene has been a leader in passing nearly every single ordinance designed to help and protect working people at LAX, including the Living Wage Ordinance, the Worker Retention Ordinance, and Labor Peace Ordinances. Marlene was telling me a little bit earlier today that her first time in this chamber's was nearly 20 years ago, when this council debated and passed a living wage ordinance, in part inspired by her testimony. Marlene also helped launch Unite Here's Hospitality Training Academy, which provides guidance and instruction for new hires and workers looking to advance and grow in their jobs. She's dedicated, she's smart, she's compassionate. Her colleagues tell me she is, something very valuable in the labor movement, a tough-as-nails negotiator who demonstrates through action the importance of supporting a thriving middle class in Los Angeles. By standing up for hard-working women and men who keep our crucial airport running, Marlene is one of the many unsung heroes of Los Angeles. When she's not advocating for her coworkers at LAX and sitting at the negotiating table, Marlene is a devoted mother of two children, who were quite young during her first visit here and in their late teens and early twenties now. And both they, as well as every one of us in this room, owe Marlene a debt of gratitude for the example that she is. It's my honor to recognize Marlene Mendoza as CD-11's Honoree during Latino Heritage Month today. It's my honor to have you stand with me because it's a reminder how each one of us need to stand with you. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Ms. Martinez, it's my understanding you had an announcement?
Mr. President, I just wanted to invite all of our honorees to please stay as long as they can so we can take a group picture after we're done.
And you'll be taking it in the back, I would assume. Okay. All right. With that said, Mr. Weezer. And good to see you, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. And colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to recognize today as part of Latino Heritage Month, Annabella Bastida, Executive Director of the Council of Mexican-American Federations, otherwise known as COFEM. You've seen these green T-shirts at various rallies, events, and advocacy events throughout the city of Los Angeles. COFEM promotes the advancement of the Latino community through public policy advocacy, community organizing, education on cultural programs, and bi-national economic development. COFEM works with 10 Mexican club federations, including the states of Colima, Durango, Guanajuato, Hidalgo, Jalisco, Michoacan, Oaxaca, Puebla, Sinaloa, and the Anahuac Youth Soccer Association. I'm wondering why my home state of Zacatecas is not there, but we'll work on that. In addition to supporting these federations, COFEM offers year-round programming, including immigration services, citizenship and civic engagement classes, parent engagement courses, and other programming. In a city with so many Latino immigrants, this organization has come to be the voice of immigrants in the city of Los Angeles. I've been very impressed with the work they've done because not only do they help the immigrants themselves, but they get engaged in public policy, which is making it easier and better for many of the immigrants who arrive to the city of Los Angeles. Annabella is well-deserving of this award because she has been doing great work for COFEM since its founding in 2005. She was appointed Executive Director of COFEM in 2012, just recently. Annabella has developed and implemented COFEM's major projects since the organization's beginning in 2005. Through her years there, Annabella has brought valuable experience in bringing together immigrant-led organizations focusing on leadership development through initiatives and services. She works to ensure that the parents and the youth of the Latino immigrant community are aware of their rights as immigrants, as well as informing them about the transformative nature of getting an education in this country. COFEM also plays an important bi-national economic development role, helping transform communities on both sides of the border. And Annabella ensures that COFEM's work aligns with their mission of helping and strengthening Latinos on both sides of the border. And recently, under Annabella's leadership, COFEM organized a successful conference and expo that was a robust and informative dialogue about several important topics of the day, including immigration reform and the launching of the Affordable Care Act, where thousands of people participated. The expo also featured and highlighted the Mexican culture and unique traditions through food, music, and entertainment. COFEM has recently been at the forefront of several immigration reform marches and movements citywide, pushing local, state, and federal representatives to advocate for comprehensive immigration reform. And it has also built a solid foundation for its work and enjoys a great reputation here and in Mexico. And for that, and for Annabella's work as being part of the foundation of this organization and now being the Executive Director, she shows what leadership and hard work is all about. And that's why it's our honor to recognize Annabella for Latina Heritage Month. Congratulations. She has some family here. Why don't you just say?
Thank you so much for this award. I am so honored and so grateful for being here. I would like to introduce my daughter, who has been my support through all the years, but also to introduce some members of my wonderful staff, that without them, we would be unable to do the great things that we are doing. Thank you, and a recognition to all of them, too.
Thank you.
Mr. Price, would you be ready with your honoree?
Mr. President, members, it's an honor to recognize several outstanding members from our community. And again, thanks to Councilwoman Martinez for her leadership in providing this program for us today. But I'm honored to recognize a group of Latinas this morning who have refused to accept the status quo and who have banded together to improve their neighborhood. Today, Council District 9 recognizes the Trinity Mothers for Action. Let's give them a hand. Yasmin Milan, Alejandro Altomirino, Blanca Marquez, Maria Alvarez, Maria Sylvia, Lelda Maldonado, Libia Mazas, Irma Aliva, Gisela Gutierrez, Wendy Romano, and Brenda Montez. In 2012, the LA Neighborhood Trust and other organizations began a community engagement project to address public safety concerns at Trinity Park in South LA in District 9. The park had long been plagued by criminal activity and was marked for closure, but these women refused to allow that to happen. Led by these mothers, parents from the community, worked with stakeholders and others, including the Department of Recreation, surrounding schools, LAPD, and other stakeholders, they formed a committee determined to reclaim Trinity Park. As a result, a parent leadership group was established to continue the work of engaging the community and advocating for programs and equipment resources at Trinity. Now, for example, we have ballet and even zumba classes are available. If you visit the park today, you will see that families can once again take their kids there to play. I'm committed to working with the Trinity Mothers for Action as we work to reclaim the park and make it a safe place for families and children to visit in the district. These leaders exemplify what a community can do when they work together. Please join me in congratulating these she-ros, Trinity Mothers for Action.
Again, Mr. Price, congratulations to your honorees. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. And I want to thank Ms. Martinez also for putting together this program, and we're very pleased to participate. We have a young lady that we're going to honor today, that when you hear her resume, you would think that she has many, many more decades in public service, but she's achieved a great deal in a very short time. One also, and that's Josiel Castellón, and also her mom, is here, Yelba. One also, and that's Josiel Castellon, and also her mom is here, Yelba, who's a business owner in the Eighth District also. Josiel was born in Nicaragua. She immigrated with her family to the United States. They settled in South Los Angeles, within the boundaries of the Eighth District, where she grew up, attended school, and has resided for over 25 years. Growing up in a low-income family and witnessing the hardships her parents experienced as immigrants instilled a personal sense of responsibility to give back and have a positive influence on her community. Josiel received her bachelor's degree from Cal State University, Los Angeles. Upon completing her BA degree, she gravitated towards nonprofit work and worked for the Asian American Drug Abuse Program, a substance abuse treatment nonprofit organization in the Eighth District. Her desire to learn more about the nonprofit community propelled her to serve a seven-year term as a board member on a federally qualified health center, East Valley Community Health Center, whose mission is to provide access to health care to the underserved population. She continued to demonstrate strong leadership skills when she became a board member of Area One Representative of her Neighborhood Council, North Area Neighborhood Development Council. As a way of providing a voice for her community, Josiel naturally assumed the role of treasurer and subsequently took a more responsible, more responsibility as chair of the Community and Budget Committee. Inspired to impact homeless children in the Eighth District, Josiel spearheaded a Christmas toy drive where she collaborated with local schools, 24th Street Theater, and her Neighborhood Council to secure a grant, enabling 500 homeless and low-income children to receive gifts. In addition, she contributed to building an ongoing partnership between Charles R. Drew University of Medicine and Science, the Los Angeles Department of Parks and Recreation, and the North Neighborhood Council, launching the first annual Bring to Heart, a health, fitness, and family fun festival held at Martin Luther King Park. Through this event, community members were bridged and education and resources provided to over 40, by over 40 nonprofit organizations. Over 1,000 families benefited from glucose, diabetes, cholesterol, blood pressure, and dental screening provided by Charles R. Drew Medical Students and UCLA School of Dentistry, respectively. Community members also participated in free cooking classes, yoga, and fitness workshops, and received free school supplies, fitness giveaway, including bikes and skateboards for the children. For three years now, this event has provided resources, education, and novel opportunities to adopt healthy living to the families of the Council District Eight and our surrounding area. Josiel's commitment to giving back was recognized when she was nominated by the Charles R. Drew President's Community Advisory Council to represent the voice of her community. She is a co-founder of L.A. Women, a grassroots nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering women in South Los Angeles through health education, health promotion, and access to resources. She is currently the Vice President of the North Area Neighborhood Development Council and works in research finance at the University of California, Los Angeles, in the School of Dentistry. I present to you Josiel Castellon.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mitch O'Farrell, are you ready?
Thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, I present as my honoree Sister Teresita Salvedra. She is the Program Director for Regis House, and with her is her guest, Executive Director, Sister Albertina Morales. Thank you. Sister Teresita is a native of Los Angeles, born and raised in Boyle Heights to immigrant parents from Michoacan, Mexico. Sister Teresita attended Assumption Elementary School and Our Lady Queen of Angels High School. She graduated from Boston College in 1987 with a master's in Hispanic Pastoral Ministry and entered the Sisters of Social Service in 1966. Is that, is that right? Eighty-seven, sixty? Okay. For the last 10 years, Sister Teresita has served the Regis House Community Center as a Program Director. Regis House is an historic Filipino town, Westlake, and it's the location where we did our first community walk back in July, and that's how I'm getting to know Teresita. The Regis House helps families in the local community by offering quality educational and social programs and by providing resources to assist and empower them. And Regis House is getting to be known in every corner of historic Filipino town where it has been located since 2008. It was in West L.A. for 60 years, but they moved locations to where their services were needed, and they are just a wonderful treasure in the district. Sister Salvedra says, "It has been a privilege to work with individuals and families in this area. We are truly committed to making new connections and being of service to our new community." I would especially like to thank Sister Teresita for hosting me back in July. It gives me great pleasure to acknowledge the great work that she has done, my honoree, and on behalf of Latinas across Los Angeles, as we celebrate women who make great contributions in our communities. And I want to give a special shout-out to our sister, Nuri Martinez, for pulling this together.
Let's give it up for Nuri.
I have a certificate of recognition, but I also have a pin that is the official flower of Los Angeles, the Bird of Paradise, and I'd like to quiz my colleague on what year we made it the sister, I mean, the city flower. It was last century. 1952, to be exact.
Laban, you didn't know that?
The Bird of Paradise was, I didn't know what year, Mr. President.
I'm saddened.
Oh, we're gonna take this off. I got it? Oops.
Mr. Laban.
Congratulations, too. I stopped you, sorry.
That's all right. Mr. President, let's hear it for the nuns who don't get enough credit anywhere that they are. Good job, Mitchell Farrell. What a special day it is here at this great school right here, quiet as mouses. Good job, classes. Good job. So here I'm next to Patty Casada, but we're honoring her mother, Lucy Casada. You all know Lucy Casada, the world-famous Ella Doby on Melrose, right across from Paramount Pictures, sometimes called the most powerful Latina in the state. Eighty-eight years, young, beautiful woman, had a doctor's appointment today, so Patricia came in her stead. Her mother is very special, married to her late father Frank Casada, and so much that he did to help people organize and do well for people. He was a delivery man, and your mother would meet him on the route, and they would philosophize about what they could do to improve people's life. And they always wanted to open up a restaurant, you know that. And they did. And guess who was their best friend at the restaurant the first time he was governor? Jerry Brown. And guess who gets the restaurant open at 9:30 in the morning when he wants something special? Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown loves Lucy Casada, because she would make you all feel so good. It's not just her restaurant, it's how she gets to the soul of people. She is very, very special, and we honor her every day. And recently, along with our former colleague, now the mayor, I said, "We could do something real special for Lucy Casada," because right across the street was the old Desi Lou Studios, Mr. Holden, and that's where Ricky Ricardo and Lucy made all their shows. So what did I do? I called it the I Love Lucy Square, half for Lucio Ball, that's the north side of the street, and the other half for this fine young lady's mom, Lucy Casada. So I want to present this to you, Patty, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, witnesses by this great day today, with the great flowers and a fresh loaf of bunker bread that's being baked for you right now at the Monastery of the Angels, because Lucy Casada is an angel in the City of Angels. Here, here.
Thank you very much. It's been our pleasure to serve this great city for 50 years, so thank you very much, all of you, especially you, Councilwoman Martinez. We're so honored to have you on board. And yes, I agree with someone who said earlier, "We need more women on this council." Sorry, boys. Nothing personal.
Nothing personal. Thank you, Mr. President, very much. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kocorian, would you like to go at this point?
Mr. Pre, oops. Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mary Garcia to join me here at my desk.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garcia.
And I'm going to use, I'm going to use that segue to talk about the fact for a moment that we don't have enough women around this horseshoe, and we certainly don't have enough Latinas around this horseshoe. So I want Mary Garcia to stand here with me for two reasons. First, so everybody can get a little bit more used to the idea of women and Latinas around this horseshoe, but also because Mary Garcia has been such a partner of mine in representing the Second Council District, that this seat is very much hers as well as mine, and so I want her to stand next to me. And I want to take a moment again, as my colleagues have, to thank Ms. Martinez for allowing us this opportunity to do it. And I couldn't be more pleased that we have the Sixth Avenue Elementary School students here to see this, because, you know, there has been a lot of talk about not enough women on the city council, and I think it's important that we continue to work on this. But I think it's also important for all the girls who are sitting here to realize that all of these incredible women that you've heard talked about today, and I know it gets a little bit boring when you hear the grown-ups talking, but all these stories that you've heard about these women, these are women who don't have the title of sitting as a city council member, but they have inspired people, they have organized people, they've made change in this city, they have made an impact on this city. They are leaders, every bit as much as every one of us, and all of you can be leaders as well. And every one of the women that you saw here today started as a girl in an elementary school, just like you, and you can make the same kind of difference in your city. So I'm so pleased that you can all be here to see these incredible women and hear their stories. Mary Garcia is an example, I think, of exactly that kind of impactful life. She is maybe best known in my area as being one of the clarion voices of neighborhood empowerment, as president of the Midtown North Hollywood Neighborhood Council and as an executive board member of the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. But she's known throughout this city and throughout Southern California also for her advocacy as an advocate and a leader in the arts community. And she's played a vital role in so much of the arts development in the area and the creation, really, of the NoHo Arts District as well, which she represents. And working, as she has, with Tom Laban, with the Community Redevelopment Agency, and with many others, Mary Garcia has played a vital role in transforming that neighborhood of North Hollywood from one that was getting kind of tired and getting kind of run down in some respects, to a place now of energy and vibrancy and contribution to the cultural life of our city. And none of that could have happened without the engagement of Mary, and organization of Mary Garcia. When it comes to health care in our community, she's a board member of the Valley Community Clinic. When it comes to protection of the environment, Ms. Martinez, she's on the board of the Great Japanese Garden in the Sixth District, but has done so much else for community beautification and in many other ways contributed to our environment. When it comes to making a difference in education, she serves on, as a distinguished alumni of Valley College, but also on their Arts Council, their Scholarship Committee, and in so many other ways has made a difference for young people growing up in our area. When it comes to the great fabric of diversity that we have in our city, she was the co-founder of the Preservation of the Native American Culture Institute. And of course, as I said, when it comes to the arts, there are few equals in the city of Los Angeles to Mary Garcia as a voice for more arts education, for more support for our cultural and artistic institutions. She serves this city currently as a commissioner on our Commission on Community and Family Services, and has been recognized for her service by three mayors, six current and former council members, several members of the legislature, and at least one President of the United States, when Bill Clinton recognized her with his Community Volunteer Service Award. But maybe the neatest one of all is she is recognized as a Ben &amp; Jerry's cool citizen as well. So, you know, that's something that I think all of us envy her for. I don't know if it includes a lifetime supply of Ben &amp; Jerry's, but it should. It should, because Mary Garcia has been one of those people who, when you come to North Hollywood and you want to get something done, and you talk to my office about it, the first person we'll tell you to talk to is Mary Garcia. And I think that's true of anybody who understands North Hollywood, the first person that you're going to want to talk to is Mary Garcia. But if you ask Mary Garcia, she'll give you 20 other names and say, "Oh, no, don't, you know, I'm not the person." It's a community, it's a big community, and there are all these other leaders who are more deserving of recognition. That's exactly why I want to recognize her today and join in so many others who've recognized her, because she gets it done, she makes a difference in her community, but she is always the most humble and unassuming and unwilling to accept recognition kind of leaders that you would ever want to see. So that's why it's that much more important that we recognize her, and I'm pleased to join Ms. Martinez in recognizing Mary Garcia for her leadership in the Second Council District and throughout our city. Mary, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. If I could call for Mr. Laban to pinch-hit for Councilmember Paul Corretz. Tom Laban.
And again, there's 15 council members, and one is out today, so I'm going to pinch-hit for him. You know what pinch-hitting is? You know that, what they do in baseball. Well, it's a special day today, Mr. President, special day that it is. Before I start, though, I want to introduce Terry Chico McKinnon, you all know her, 46 years with the city. She worked for Mayor Yordi when they started this recognition in a small way back then now to such a large way today. Give Terry a big hand right there. I want to say it correctly out right now. Shannon Montoya, where's Shannon? Right there. Come on out, Shannon, right now. Bring your daughter out, bring your husband out there, and also...
He's not my husband, his wife would get mad at me.
And Violet, a hug. So give these two young ladies a big hand right now. This hug, come up here right now. She came in 1952. She came to Los Angeles at a very young age from Guatemala. In her life, she worked very hard, and she proudly was noted as one of the great dancers. She married and opened Emile Swiss Pastry, yet a little yet legendary shop that was a mainstay for the region nearly two decades on the west side. That's correct? Four decades, four decades. We got it corrected. You always correct me, that's okay. All the work that you've done made an impact, and also you went on to work to get a degree in finance from UCLA. And the pastry shop did close in 2001, but you're well-known for significant contributions and community involvement in the Fifth District for good causes. She is a treasure individual on behalf of Councilman Paul Corretz. This combination is here presented to you. We're going to get him to sign it, because he's not here yet. City Attorney requires him to sign it. Give Violet a hug, a big hand right there. And knowing how green Mr. Corretz is, he didn't give you flowers, he gave you a plant so it's going to last a lifetime. Thank you so much. Shannon, with your beautiful daughter. What's your daughter's name?
Madison.
Madison. Give them a big hand right here. Come closer. A passionate member of the Westwood community, a business leader and a community volunteer, she has been a positive force in the Westwood community. She has been a positive force in the Westwood community, just like the offensive line that opens the holes for UCLA football. She is undefeated in helping anyone who comes along her way. She served in the Westwood community in numerous capacities. Since 2009, she is the founding board member of the Westwood Community Council for four years on the planning committee and as the food and beverage chair of Westwood's Annual Volunteer Day. She has actively supported the Friends of Westwood Library, which has nothing better than friends of libraries. Children, libraries are important, and it's important to be friends. Ms. Montoya is one of those friends, and also spoken before the Village Rotary in Westwood and the Westwood Host Committee for the Los Angeles Film Festival. Perhaps most notably, says Mr. Caretz, Ms. Montoya played a key leadership role in bringing back the many gala red carpet movie premieres. As you know, back in the days, 40 years ago, when Gil was at Roosevelt and I was at Marshall, you had to go to Westwood to see a first-run movie. Ms. Montoya was the one who brought it back. She makes a difference every day in Westwood, and we're very much proud to have her, and she led the charge to make historic cultural monuments for the Village Theater and the Bruins Theaters, as well as overhaul revitalization of Westwood Village. On behalf of Councilman Caretz, I salute you with this great commendation, which he'll officially sign, and thank Madison, your daughter, to be here. And you guys planned this together because you're wonderful people. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Thank you, thank you.
Now, I just want to do this because Paul Luen would do this.
It's okay.
Here we go. A two-shot. Here we go, right here. Give them a big hand. Great power out of West Side. Good job. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. I too want to truly thank-- Get in closer. --and to our IT folks. I want to have a wide shot because I have my honoree sitting with me today on the President's chair, because if there's ever a young lady destined to be president of anything, it's my honoree to my right. But I do want to thank Nuri for stepping in and doing a phenomenal job, and one that I think you did. Sometimes when you do things so good, you have to be careful because that means people will rely on you to continue to do these things. I have a feeling we're going to be relying on you to do many, many more things in the future. Could we please give Ms. Martinez another round of applause? I have Brisha Lopez sitting next to me today, a young lady who was born in Mitla, Oaxaca, in the great country of Mexico. She's, I guess, her and her sisters were basically raised in the kitchens of their grandmothers, and she is a partner in La Gallegesa Restaurant, which is on Olympic Boulevard, one of the best, if not the best Oaxacan restaurant in the city of Los Angeles. All of you should go there. Mr. Weezer, who was here earlier, he and I got into it a bit a few weeks ago about who makes the most, the best mole on the planet. Well, I am with the folk from Oaxaca, and I think Mr. Weezer is with Pep Pueblo. But if you want mole, go to La Gallegesa on Olympic. This young lady has been honored, and stories have been printed about her in The New Yorker, LA Times, LA Weekly, Orange County Weekly, and she's been featured on KPCC Radio. And I could go on. And she was a founding member of the National Americans' Alliances of Emerging Leaders, the LA chapter, and she's on the board of the Taste of Mexico Association. But just a couple of quick personal things. Not too long ago, she was invited to Washington, DC to meet with the President of our country. It was her and 11 other individuals. They sat in the Roosevelt Room, and they talked about immigration and immigration reform. I mean, when I first met her, I was trying to really find out about the Oaxacan community. I had heard so much about them, and when I met her, I felt a natural kinship to her and to her people. She was a natural leader. I was so impressed with her that at one moment I entertained the thought of trying to hire her. I just couldn't pay enough to have this successful young lady work with me. I do expect big things from her. Again, Nuri, I want to thank you for this opportunity for me to, all of us to present great Latinas in the city of LA. But for me personally, I just want to ask her to introduce two very special guests that we have that are with us today. This is a family-owned restaurant, and everybody has to do a job. It's just that Brisha does so many jobs. But could we give a round of applause for Brisha Lopez?
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me here. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, so much for putting this together. I just feel so blessed, and I just feel so blessed to have two of the most important people in my life, my sister Elizabeth and my brother Fernando, if they could stand up right now, please, because we are a family and--
Let's give them a round of applause.
If it wasn't because I have such a loving and blessed family, I wouldn't be here today. So thank you so much, and God bless all of you guys here. You guys have just did a great thing for our city, and I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I'd like to present you with a bouquet of flowers and a certificate signed by Ms. Martinez and myself. And you should keep this because I have a feeling that Nuri's signature is going to be worth something in the future. So anyway, congratulations. I look forward to going back to the restaurant. The best, I had mole, I had eggs with mole. The best restaurant that you could eat at on Olympic Boulevard. Ladies and gentlemen, Brisha Lopez.
Thank you.
Now, Ms. Martinez, do you want me to try to get all of the honorees? Would you please, sergeants, help them go into the back of the chambers, and we'll try to get a nice group shot with Ms. Martinez and all of the members? Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that that was held special by cards. I have a card on Mr. Arnold Sacks. Arnold, are you around? Yeah, I see you in the back. Arnold, start coming up, if you would. And Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. I do not see John, though. But please, Arnold, come on up and start things off.
Should I wait a second, sir? Or should I wait--
Yeah, let's give a second. You deserve to have a little quiet. Shh, kids, let's be quiet.
They're just kids, Mr. Wilson. Just children. Children have fun. Enjoy life while you're young.
Mr. Sacks, let's get started. Let's please, shh.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. And I'm glad that there's funding available for this affordable housing development. But what's a curiosity is the fact that it's AB 1290 funding, and that's the funding that's returned to the city council offices as a remnant of CRA funding. And even though CRA has been discontinued by the governor, it's been eliminated, the AB 1290 funding is still available to the council office for use as they prescribe. But what's really interesting is if you look at this project, and I'm not sure how long it's been in the pipeline, is that the prior official that led this district was able to come up with $50 million for the Broad Museum from CRA funding, come up with relocation CRA funding for Gensler to relocate from Santa Monica to LA, but didn't have CRA funding for this 61 housing, affordable housing project. Somewhat amazing. But she still had the CRA AB 1290 funding that was available to the council office. So it's a priority of how the money is used. And if you notice, read the downtown news, you'll see that there's quite a lot of development going on in downtown after the fact that CRA funding has dried up. Yet when CRA funding was first thought about to be eliminated, there was an outcry about what would happen. There's like 90 projects going on in downtown LA. How many of them available under CRA funding? Not sure. But when there was CRA funding available, there was nothing going on. Now that there's CRA funding not available, there's lots going on.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. What this is, is $25,000 for, through the CRA, of money. Let me tell you what happened. The CRA was a layer of government. It took the money from the state and the county and the federal government for their bureaucracy and then passed what was left to city housing. Now that that level of bureaucracy is gone, more of the state money is coming for housing. And as I said, 1971, 42 years ago, I went to my first CRA meeting and said, I will outlive you, and I damn well-- Are the kids gone? I damn well did outlive them. By several years now.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. That's the last speaker that we have on this item, but I do want to take a moment to acknowledge the presence of my former boss and former member of this council, Councilman Nate Holden. If we could give Councilman Holden a round of applause. And to indicate that this was an item that Mr. Holden and I want to say Mr. Zine worked on early on. And also, Mr. Holden, I remember when you took me to the Casada Restaurant on Melrose. I went there with you many, many years ago. So let's prepare to vote on this items, item, members. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, the ayes have it. Let us move on to fourth with per-- Okay, let's--
And also, Mr. President, there's requests to send item 25 forthwith.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. All right, we'll go to item one. Item one is called "Special by Cards." I know we have John Walsh and Mr. Constituent and Jasmine Gonzalez. If you guys-- In fact, Jasmine, if you get up here, we'll let you go speak first. Jasmine, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Constit-- Or Constituent. Yes, go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Jasmine Selin Gonzalez. I'm Salvador Gonzalez's daughter regarding property 138 East 102nd Street, Los Angeles, California. I have done the corrections for demolishing the addition of the part of the garage. We bought the house like that in 2006, as I provide in the residential appraisal report. For the other things that we are charged for, for the garage having incorrect legal occupancy, there was never no one living in there. It's not in a condition where a person can live in there. It's pure concrete, and it's bricks. There is never plumbing and electricity. The only wires that were outside from the house were made in 1968 to the original garage. So we took those, we took those three wires from outside. We took them out, and I have tried so many times to go to code enforcement and have them go in, but they didn't. Mr. Robert Gard denied his service. I explained in the letter. He was charging me $360 to go get that other report done. When I found out that they don't have to charge me for that fee, I went and spoke to Andrew Longoria. When he denied, he told me he would send another inspector. He sent Mr. Edmon Decker, and he just told me, demolish it, and we'll go to the court, show proofs that you demolish it, and then we'll do the other correction. But until the day of today, I have made more than 10 or 15 messages I have left, and they have never responded back. I provide you guys with images of the house, and also the house was like this before, and now it's this portion of it. It's been demolished. It didn't have anything. It didn't have-- There were pure bricks, and it had no cement, no cement inside. So we took it off. We were like, we're not going to risk for an earthquake and then to fall on my three childrens that I have.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, I'll get to you in one second. Let's get the public comment done, though. Mr. Constituent, the last speaker.
Hall American, red, white, and blue, or red, white, and green? When it comes to a lien, which is a legal claim on the property of another for the satisfaction of a debit or duty, who's liable? And what is the legal obligation of Building and Safety when they do not, on their portion, stick to their investigation and keep it within the arrangements they make with your constituents? Residents of Los Angeles, you heard the plea of the young lady. We're talking about her home. How many of you have been violated by the city of Los Angeles by liens? Yes, Los Angeles, I'm talking to you. Why? Because we have ignored the issue about what it's like to be an American, to have a home when we've purchased homes under the pretense as is, as you are in your home, right? But again, the city comes in during the recession, and now they're just hammering us with these liens. So I make a motion to hear from Building and Safety soon on this floor, before the public, before the residents, and all of you constituents, to explain what you're hearing a protest is. What is your objections to these liens? Are they legal or illegal? I asked the state to investigate these problems of allegations that even Zuma Dog, David Salzberg, talked about, and he's not even here, and I'm bringing up his name to conclude that there are problems still with--
Mr. President, he's not speaking about this property.
Come on, Mr. Constituent, on the item.
So let's keep to the American dream and not lean for the nuisance of abatements, but let's correct it with the right actions of our city, Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you.
Sir, I didn't have a card, so I'll go to Mr. Parks. And Sergeant, you talk-- No, no, talk to him, Sergeant. He can't speak until we find out what's going on. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to comment on the young lady that was up earlier. This item was continued twice to give her an opportunity to work out their differences between her and the building and safety. It appears as though there's a fact pattern that the building and safety does not agree with, and also that these issues are unresolvable. And I would ask Building and Safety, as this gets approved today, is to work out some kind of a payment plan to assist her in making these payments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parks. And it's no back and forth, Jasmine. So with that said, we're going to prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we'll go to item 29. Somebody find Labonge. We do have a public speaker on this item, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman. So John, if you could please come forward.
And for this item, a substitute motion, 29A, has been circulated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This 29 concerns the Aqueduct Centennial Broadcast and Webcast. Well, you know, these broadcasts and webcasts are just commercials for city council. You know, they won't put them up on the, it's live now, but I can't see what's live, only when they're up here. They keep the two big screens so we can't see it. I don't blame the people who work and do the Centennial Broadcast and Webcast for being, for, in fact, keeping our faces off the screen, because they're told to do that by these people up here. Nothing works here in the City of Los Angeles. Nothing works at city council. Their clock doesn't work. They don't work. Nothing works. I still have two minutes. I just spent about one minute. See you later. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Walsh, look to your right, please. Look above to your right as you go away. There you go. Okay.
What I said?
No, okay, all right. If you, that's it, all right.
Mr. Herman, please.
Can I get my time restored, or is this one minute? Again, preserve our wet lines. We're all Americans. Save the aqueducts. But let me read this to you. Motion from Fuentes and Bloomingfield relative to the Los Angeles Aqueduct Broadcast and When you hear us speak, or when you see us on television, we're far from getting our point across due to the interference of sometimes these mics, but I'm going to continue on topic. It says, "They want an appropriate fund of $54,425 for the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power." Bless you. You're welcome. To fund the 342/32 account, 320 15K LA City View on Channel 35. Hold my time.
No other speakers? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Next item.
14 ayes.
Thank you. What's our next item?
Item 27, called Special For Cards.
Arnold Sacks. Is Arnold here? Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
Arnold Sacks. This is to support Community Services District 9, $45,000 from the General City Purposes Fund. So I'm wondering, we have the general fund. This is from budget discussions in 1314 when Molly Rose gave Budget 101. And she gave a description of all these different reserve funds that the city must have when it's budget discussions. General Fund, the General Reserve Fund, which we're talking about, this is the General City Purposes Fund, the Emergency Fund, the Revenue Uncertainty Fund, the Special Fund, which had $9.2 million in it, and the Budget Stabilization Fund. Now, there's no revenue here from AB 1290 funding, bus bench funding, pipeline revenue funding, street furniture revenue funding.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this.
Mr. Sacks, hold this time for a second. Mr. Sacks, city attorney inform us you're not speaking to the subject. Please, know your subjects.
I'm just trying to get people to understand the different purpose funds that are available to the city council to dip into, and the different revenue funds that are not available to the general public, neighborhood councils, for them to use within the neighborhoods. That's the purpose there, sir. Thank you.
Very good, Mr. Sacks.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is for a $40,000, $45,000 General City Purpose Fund for Council District 9, cultural art and city events. We're all in favor of this. We know this is the district with the most African-Americans, and we know what a racist city council is, and what a racist city is, and everybody knows you always get the wrong end of the stick. So I think Mr. Kern Price is doing a good job trying to bring money into that area of the city. Where I worked for many years, I taught at Sixth Avenue School as a substitute, and I'd just like to say, Herman, long shot for two minutes. Arnold Sacks, long shot for two minutes. They don't want us, but when it's a restaurant owner that gives you free meals.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. All right. Any others cards, Madam Clerk? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 28, called Special For Cards.
From Lenox, California, Arnold Sacks. John Walsh from Hollywood, California. Mr. Herman from Boyle Heights.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, $45,000, or $40,000 to help establish, a matching fund for establishing a business improvement district for maybe 1290 funds. Item 26, $25,000 for low-cost affordable housing. Why not change those numbers around and put the $40,000 towards low-cost affordable housing, and maybe the $25,000 for the establishment, the matching part of the business improvement district? Never mind that. Why not establish a community taxing district? Why not establish a community benefits district? Why not establish a community amenities trust fund? Why establish a business improvement district that will need to have a nonprofit operated as oversight instead of any one of these other community business districts that will not need oversight by a nonprofit, but instead be overseen by the city A O's office?
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I've lived in a BID for, what, 10 years? I was skeptical at the beginning. Remember, I'm a resident of this city since 1976. The BID has done a great job across the street, Yucca and Argyle, a house, abandoned building just full of drug dealers. I went to the LAPD, nothing. I got nothing from them, month after month after month after month. Then I went to the BID where we had retired LAPD. I showed him what it was like. He went to the LAPD, and they boarded it up the next day. If you, I mean, tell you, if you are out there and you have a BID, don't waste your time with the cops. Go to the BID. They know everybody, every cop that's around, they're ex-cops. They will get something from you because they are not directly connected. In fact, because they are disconnected, they can help you. And remember, I got up here 10, 12 years ago and said the BID was worthless. But I'm now telling you, as someone who has lived in this city, not someone who just gets up here and says, "Ah, you're a bench of crooks. Why didn't you put $40,000 here and $20,000 there?" I'm telling you right now, the business and district, BID and Central Avenue can only help in fighting crime. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. Have we not faced the inadequacies of transferring or approving inappropriate funds? For who? Redevelopment project services? Jerry Brown got rid of them, and yet we're finding funding only for the small amount of $40,000 under this Assembly Bill 1290 fund. Pretty ridiculous. And my bill, AB, is not all-American anymore. Thank you.
That completes public comment on this. No speakers on the queue. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
14 ayes. Okay, I'd like to go to public comment right now. Sean Murphy is first, followed by Arnold Sacks, John Walsh.
Well, Washington, D.C., you better start negotiating soon. It's a lot of angry people in Los Angeles. And I mean negotiate soon. You only got 48 hours to make up your mind without going bankrupt. And I say get the ball rolling. It's not angry at you, council people, I'm mad at Washington. Don't take it seriously. Sidewalks need to be repaired. We need to open up the video conferencing in Van Nuys. Still waiting for the crosswalk. St. Charles is waiting for the crosswalk still, Tom. Thank you.
I'm working on it, Sean. As Mr. Lennox comes up, Mr. Hawks, not Lennox Hawks, I want to talk to Mr. Lennox there. Arnold Sacks. Arnold, would you pause for a minute, Arnold? Number 26, Mr. Bloomingfield, super fourth with, Madam Clerk, walking over for the mayor's signature. Thank you so much. Mr. Arnold Sacks, without objection.
Which one? Fourth with, without objection?
No, you're without objection. I love you, Arnold.
Oh, thank you, sir. Anyway, thank you. Again, Arnold Sacks. And I really wanted to speak about this for a few weeks, but unfortunately, with city hall, you just don't have a chance sometime. But this is in regard, again, to some of your discussion about how you present yourselves and you crow about the bills that you authored when you were in the State Assembly and when you were in the Senate. And what's fascinating, actually, is there's five elected officials now, including the new city attorney, Mr. Fuhrer, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Bloomingfield, Mr. Price, and Mr. Sadio, who are all within the city attorney, within the state legislation, state legislature within the last four years. So during that timeframe, and what's important here is, Mr. Sadio was in council chambers before he was sworn in, discussing an item that concerned my boy, Mr. Reyes. And you actually, as five members, voted for legislation that created the Gold Line Construction Authority, or actually allowed for the Gold Line Construction Authority to be used as new, a new name for the Blue Line Construction Authority. And you voted for this in 2011. And yet, history will show, and facts will show, that my boy, Mr. Reyes, was actually sitting on the Gold Line Construction Authority in 2009, 2008. And the MTA actually got property through the Gold Line Construction Authority in 2007. So how'd he do that? You know, the last person I can remember who was able to answer questions before they were asked was Johnny Carson. All right? He used to wear the big hat. Ed McMahon would hold up the card, and Johnny Carson would have the answers to the questions.
It was Karnack, not Johnny Carson. Thank you, Arnold. Next, we have John Walsh from Hollywood, California. Have a good afternoon.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, speaking to all the potential tourists in the world. See LA and die. Stay away from LA for your own health and safety. LA tourist friendly? No. LA tourist fatal. Let's take the Venice Boardwalk. Someone run over. Alice Gruppioni, Italian tourist. Italy, Europe, stay away. They have not apologized up here, and they refused to have a meeting to adjourn in her honor. Alice Gruppioni's blood is on you, the tourist's blood. Visitors to Hollywood Walk of Fame, multiple stabbed, multiple tourists. There's blood all over Hollywood Boulevard, all over Hollywood Boulevard. Angels Flight, death trap. The safety device was disabled with a branch by the people that you hired for safety. LAFD rescued them. They didn't rescue Leon Preport 11 years ago, and he was killed again on the world's shortest 290 feet, 298 feet railway. The blood on your hands, I have asked you over and over again, he was a Holocaust survivor. Adjourn in his memory. You spit and defecate on the memory of a Holocaust survivor. What garbage Kerets is, what garbage Jew Englander is. We have a term for Jews like that. They're Capo Jews. They've worked with the Nazis in the camps. That's what's happening right now. Stay away from LA for your own safety. Tuberculosis, there's a strain of tuberculosis running rampant, and we just found the other day, there are hundreds and hundreds of buildings that are not reinforced, that will fall on top of you. This city is out of control. Go to other places in California. Stay away from this city, tourists of the world, or you'll be sorry.
This was John Walsh with his public comment allowed by state law, his opinion only. I want Daniel Jones right now, followed by Richard Robinson.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Jones. This is for all the new city council members and Mr. Labonge. Remember, my past generation was involved in the California State Constitution, and this generation, the Jones family is going to make sure it stays that way. And I have proof of that right now. This, ladies and gentlemen, is the covenant by which this country lives by, and my family is considered our national treasure. To the end of the institution, the maintenance and administration of the government is to secure the existence of the body politic, to protect it, to furnish the individuals who compose it with the power of enjoying in safety and tranquility their natural rights, blessings of life. And whenever these great objects are not obtained, the people have a right to alter the government and to take measures necessary for their safety, their happiness, their prosperity. The body politic is formed by a voluntary, voluntary association of individuals. It is a social compact by which the whole people covenants with each citizen and each citizen with the whole people, that all shall be governed by certain laws for the common good. Here's the explanation to why. Governor Brown raised the tuition over 300% on every minority in the state of California. Wisdom and the knowledge, as well as virtue, diffused generally among the body of the people being necessary for the preservation of their rights and liberties, and these depend on spreading the opportunities, advantages of education in various parts of the country among the different orders of the people. It shall be the duty of the legislatures and the magistrates rewards immunities for the promotion of agriculture, sciences, commerce, trade, the principles, the constant and incalculable principles of humanity, general bill evidence, public and private charity, industry, frugality, please just a moment longer, honesty.
That's all right. It completes your time, Mr. Jones.
Sincerity, good humor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members. St. John 316 says, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him shalt not perish but have everlasting life." Thank you.
Thank you. Augustine, I want to pronounce your last name correctly, Augustine. How do you pronounce your last name, please?
Sevada.
Sevada, thank you.
I come here to speak to you all, Mr. President, Acting President, and council people who are present, which isn't that many, about policy issues that are taking place in the 13th councilmanic district. And it's an irony that during Hispanic Heritage Month, that a lot of the policies that are taking place, such as anti-vendedores ambulantes. taking place, such as anti-vendedores ambulantes, anti-youth, or pro-gentrification, are targeted against the Hispanic people, the Mexican, the Chicano, the Central American people. And this is a disgrace, and it has to be stopped. And I believe you, in good conscience, unless you're hypocrites, that you've just celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month here, you'll do something about it with your colleague from that district, Mr. O'Farrell, and his chief assistants, who was the one behind all of this, because she did it before when I was on the neighborhood council back about six years ago, trying to gentrify, which means slash ethnic cleansing, get rid of all of the Latinos, the Hispanics, the Chicanos, the Mexicans, the Central Americans, so that yuppies can come in, white and Asian yuppies, who don't give a damn about the youth. And our schools there are loaded with youth of Chicano, Latino heritage. And what are they getting? The school district is a disaster, 62% dropout rate of Spanish surname children. You need to do something about this. This city is a majority Chicano, Mexicano. The first language in this city is Espanol. So start learning how to speak Spanish, because we're taking over. Do your job.
Mr. Herman, the last public comment card.
Law is reason for passion, but the problem of my complaint raises an issue of more importance, that of the general public importance. Lot of time. Title II prohibits discrimination based on disability in public accommodations. Entities covered by Title III, which would include this council chambers, include places such as lodging, establishments, public gathering, wow, places of exhibition or containment, places of recreation, such as Hazard Park, such as sidewalks that I and many of you with disabilities on wheelchairs and walkers and crutches and broken legs have to walk all around for the last six or 10 years off of Soto Corridor, when there was a time when Jose Weisar could have done much for our community. Instead, he's under the allegation of a sexual harassment that's still pending. Where are we, council? Where are we? Are we not American? Let's believe in something that's good and in interest of all. And hopefully, this passion of your enlightenment to Los Angeles will create and bolster us to believe that there's something positive, something objective coming from you, as opposed to our negativity and criticism. Hootie, woo-hoo, is a reminder of our public comment. That's why we exist, to bring to your attention the importance of peoples with disabilities, not just in Los Angeles, but worldwide, Mr. LeBong, worldwide. Venice Beach, hootie-hoot to all of you out there, those of you in Boyle Heights, Lincoln Heights, Eagle Rock, join the club.
All right, that completes public comment. Do you want to welcome Joe Hinton? Joe, welcome back. Good to see you visit Los Angeles again. Public comment is complete. Let's go back to the agenda, if we would, Madam Clerk. What item do you have there? Nine?
Yes, item nine, called special by Mr. O'Farrell for Mr. Keretz.
Okay, so, Mr. Keretz, your time has come. Thank you very much. Item number nine. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. President. According to its website, the Water Research Foundation sponsors cutting-edge research surrounding the most complex challenges facing the water community today. Since DWP is a member of the Water Research Foundation, is it able to request the issues that the foundation looks into? I'd like to ask if staff could answer that question.
Water and Power here? Sergeants, assist Water and Power, please.
Good morning. My name is Milata Gabi. I'm the Assistant Director for Water Quality.
And so are we able to request that they look into issues at our request?
Yes, councilmember, based on some of the comments that you made during the Energy and Environment Committee, we went back, and the Water Research Foundation will be conducting a research and workshop in early 2014 on fracking, and some additional may come up as a result of that study. It will also include participants from oil and gas companies.
So they'll look into the dangers of fracking, or the potential dangers. Can they also do a cost-benefit analysis of the amount of energy gained versus the amount of water that we have to use in that process?
We could definitely seek such information, councilmember. This is at the early stages, and as the study is further developed, I'm sure we could be able to add different components to it.
So if we could be sure and ask for both of those elements, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other speakers on the cue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. So ordered. Next item.
Item seven, called special by Councilmember O'Farrell.
Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I just want to say that arguably, there's nothing more important than doing all we can to keep our signature industry, that is, the entertainment industry here in Los Angeles, providing over 600,000 direct and indirect jobs, and well over 90% of those jobs being middle-class and below. I want to compliment my predecessor, now mayor Eric Garcetti, for introducing this motion 16 months ago, and our colleague Paul Kocorian for seconding, because they understand that we must stop runaway production. We know that at the state level, there are subsidies being offered, and we're pushing for additional subsidies, and I'd like to thank our colleague Felipe Fuentes for his great work at the state level on that. Our state equals have a lot more work to do in that respect, but we absolutely need to do everything we can in identifying local incentives. And I think that this new definition of television pilots and the waiving of the fees is a very positive step in the right direction. As I said, lots at stake. Runaway production is a real problem, considering that in China, they're building several thousand square feet of sound stages and studios, and those will be open within a short number of years. And also, considering that not too long ago, over 80% of the pilots were shot in Los Angeles, and in 2011, it was only 51%. So, folks, we need to help our industry, we need to keep our television pilots, our television shows here. We have a lot to work with. The industry does not want to leave Los Angeles. So we must do all we can at the local level, local government. We have to create new incentives, and this is, as I said, one step in the right direction. So I urge support of this report, so we can move forward and keep these middle-class jobs local, regional, not just in the 13th. There are industry professionals in every neighborhood across the city and beyond, and we absolutely have to fight to keep this industry here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for those comments. Colleagues, I think it's important to remember that when production leaves Los Angeles, the loser is not the big studio, the loser is not the famous producer, the loser is not the A-list actor. The loser is the person who gets up early in the morning, drives to work in a pickup truck in order to serve as a carpenter on a set, or the person who has been working their entire career as an electrician in the film industry, or the seamstress, or the other below-the-line, middle-class jobs who don't travel to Vancouver, or to New Mexico, or to New York to go with a production. Those are the people who don't work when we don't have production here in Los Angeles. So that's why it's so vitally important that, and by the way, not just those who work in the industry, but all those small businesses in each of our districts who are reliant on the business that they get when those people are working as well. The multiplier effect of ensuring that production stays here in Los Angeles is tremendous. Now, you take that to the nth degree with TV pilot production, because if we support TV pilots being produced here in Los Angeles, there's a very good chance that when that series gets picked up, the television series will be produced in Los Angeles as well. And then you have millions and millions of dollars being spent on those productions, which are spent right here in Los Angeles instead of in Vancouver or in New York. We've seen the benefit of, by the way, Mr. O'Farrell, there's no subsidy in California. There is a tax incentive, which is not a subsidy, it is an incentive, that it has helped to stop some of the bleeding that we've had. But clearly, we have to do much more, and I was proud to have been the author of that tax incentive bill. Mr. Fuentes was the author of the continuation of that bill. We all have to redouble our efforts to make sure that California continues to step up and is competitive with the rest of the country in incentivizing production. But what we can do here, right here in Los Angeles today, is pass this ordinance, send a signal to the television production industry that we want these jobs here, we want production here, and we're going to fight to ensure that that market share goes back up from 50% to closer to where it should be, in the 80s and the 90s percent. And if we do that successfully, it's going to make a real difference to our economy in Los Angeles, it's going to make a real difference to the middle-class employees of this industry, but also the small businesses throughout Los Angeles. So I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter did come before the Economic Development Committee, and we are certainly in support of the comments made by my colleagues, O'Farrell and Kocorian. I would, Mr. President, move that the report be amended to substitute the ordinance transmitted on October the 10th for the ordinance referred to in this agenda. It reflects the language regarding the television pilot, as we discussed at that time, and I would encourage my colleagues to support the amendment as presented. Thank you.
Very good. Seconded by Mr. Kocorian. Thank you. Note that, Madam Clerk. Mr. Keretz.
I think we all realize how critical the film and television industry is to the whole economy in Los Angeles, and how much it spreads from the direct to the restaurants and the dry cleaners and the hotels and some of the other uses. It's really the underpinning of our entire economy here in Los Angeles and beyond in California. The problem is, it's much harder in Los Angeles to even identify the opportunities to help the industry. We have the greatest opportunity at the state level, and many of us here fought those battles. I was there earlier, we weren't as successful. Mr. Kocorian and others were successful in getting tax credits started. Hopefully, we see those expanded greatly, so we actually can dramatically impact runaway production. And frankly, it's kind of a battle. We should think of it more as a war than fighting for a creative industry, because the longer we allow runaway production to occur, the more places build up in infrastructure, and right now is the time when we could knock it out. We'll do a little bit with this, but we really need to lobby the legislature to dramatically increase what they did beyond the surprising first step of getting some tax credits, which I started to think would never happen when I was there. But we need to get hundreds of millions of dollars in tax credits, and there's a multiplier effect, so it's not going to cost the state money. It will make money for the state and make money for the city. And so we all need to be out there strongly pushing for this, and I thank Mr. O'Farrell and others for this measure and other next steps at the state level, because the window, I think, is starting to close, where we can dramatically bring back and reestablish our film and television industry. So thank you all for working on this first step, and let's keep it going.
We have one more speaker on the queue, but before I introduce the speaker, I want to welcome the pride of Loyola High, Councilman of the 14th District, one time, Nick Pacheco. Nick, good to see you, Nick. Felipe Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, for bringing this motion forward. This is incredibly important. You heard some of my colleagues speak to the merits of the statewide tax incentive, and it's a very important program, and I want to put a finer point on some of the elements of that program. But this particular motion addresses television, which the statewide program doesn't currently address. So the exemption, the ability to go ahead and relax those permitting fees for television production is incredibly important, not just for Los Angeles, but for California. We know this past year, over 20 different television programs were started, and only one of them was filmed here in Los Angeles. We know that in the United Kingdom, for example, they have a very robust program, and it's a rebate program, is what they call it. $400 million is what they offer in the UK. In New York, same type of competition. Forty other states in this great country are vying for this signature industry. Incredibly important that we keep it here. And to just sort of put a finer point on Mr. Keretz's remarks, yes, the dry cleaners, yes, the restaurants and that sort of thing are important, but that is the gravy on top of this program. We know that in real wages, California gets between a 3% and 5% benefit as a result for every dollar that we put into the program. Statewide, the program's $100 million, 3% to 5% return, and any economy is fantastic, Mr. LeBong, which is why it's so important that we continue to support this program. And I want to thank my current councilmembers, former legislators who voted for this in the legislature. It received near unanimous support. Only one member of the legislature in the Senate voted no, and it was an accident, and she apologized profusely. But, Mr. Kocorian, thank you so much. You labored for this in 2008, we realized it in the 2009 budget, and I was able to go ahead and extend the program for three years. And currently, in the legislature, we need to help our Northern California friends understand that this is a statewide benefit. It's not a Los Angeles tax subsidy or program. It is a benefit to the entire state of California, measuring hundreds of million dollars on an annual basis, that otherwise would be leaving California, Los Angeles, and God forbid, going overseas. So thank you, Mr. Kocorian and Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing this program forward. Incredibly important. Thank you.
Absolutely incredibly important, as is Paul Adley. Paul, get up here real quick, give us a one minute on how important this is, as opposed to television production, to movie making. Motion pictures.
Well, we've found, as has been talked about, that we continue to bleed.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Paul Adley, I'm the president of Film LA, which is your film office. We have found the bleeding to be continuing, and despite the good efforts of creating a tax credit program, we continue to lose the most economically valuable production to other states. I just returned from Korea, where film commissioners from around the world gathered to talk about how successful they are at taking the business from California. And so an expanded credit at the state level is critical, our patient is critical, we need to keep it off life support at this point, and this kind of action by the council to send a signal to the industry that the city is very serious, I think will echo in Sacramento. So thank you.
Thank you very much. A rock's a rock, a tree's a tree, go shoot it at Griffith Park, right, Paul? All right, good. All right, so there's no other speakers. Very good work here. We've got to convince Trinity and Alpine and Shasta and all those northern counties how important this is for the whole state. But for us here, television production is so important, two of my brothers are working on the East Coast, because they can't work in Los Angeles. Army Wives did another show they're working on, so it's no fun, and that's so important. And not just that, it breaks up families. That's the real serious thing, too, when families have to work outside the county. You know that, Felipe.
Mr. President, is that these television programs, if they're picked up, five to six years average run. So it's not a one-time sort of benefit to us, it's having all of these families working, filming, consuming here in Los Angeles. So thank your family for doing.
And being able to go home at night, that's so important, too. Anyway, no speakers on the queue, and thank all of you for that. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Super fourth with on that, right away. Get it on the mayor's desk, right away. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Price. Next item. And before you do that, Donna Washington, thanks for the great work you do. Have a problem with filming? Solve it. Donna Washington, give her a big hand. Okay, here we go.
Mr. President, that council has motions for postponement referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements? We did have one big noise complaint, I think in the first district last night around 6:35, and they hit that nice hit, the. and they hit that nice hit, the Dodgers. We want to wish the Dodgers well. What I did have, Mr. City Attorney, is this too long to, statutes of limitations? But I worked for John Farrar, I used to sign out going to Elysian Park checking out noise complaint when the Dodgers had a game. So it was, it worked. John always let me go. Any announcements? Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, of course, join you as all of our colleagues do in congratulating the Dodgers, but I also, I, yeah, I also want to take a moment to congratulate the University of Southern California and particularly Professor R.A. Warshell, who won the Nobel Prize in Chemistry, USC's fifth Nobel Prize. And of course, we're just as proud of our Nobel Prize winners as we are our champions on the field. So congratulations go out to Professor.
Very good. That's very wonderful. Announcements? Adjourned motions, members?
Excuse me, Mr. President, there's a request to send item 34th with.
So ordered, without objection. Adjourned motions, all rise, please, for adjourned motions. Sergeants, all rise, for adjourned motions. Mr. Bonin.
President, colleagues, I'd like to adjourn today in memory of a guy who is a legend in political and communication circles and a resident of CD-11, Sidney Galanti, who was a renowned TV director and political media consultant, passed away on October 5th at his home in Pacific Palisades at the age of 81. Sidney was born in the 1930s in Newark, New Jersey. His wife Joan and he married in 1954 and he moved to LA in 1966 where he settled in the Marquez Knowles neighborhood and stayed there for the remainder of his life in a home and a neighborhood he loved. Sidney worked with President Kennedy and Vice President Hubert Humphrey handling television media and then later worked with Edward R. Murrow at the U.S. Information Agency before coming to Los Angeles and working for an ad agency. He was perhaps most famous for having been the co-creator and the producer of the Jane Fonda Workout, which was the bestselling home video series that started a global trend in fitness and exercise in the home video industry. Sidney created and consulted on communications and television programming for the JFK administration and for an international ad agency and a long list of presidential and political candidates, members of Congress, governors, other elected officials, including Harold Washington's first successful mayoral campaign in Chicago. He was very actively involved in helping to pass initiatives in California, including something very important to all of us, particularly the residents of my district, the California Coastal Act. He also helped pass the California Tobacco Tax, the protection of California's redwoods and the closure, the first closure of a nuclear power plant, Rancho Saco in Sacramento. In recent years, he expanded his work internationally, consulting in Great Britain, Lithuania, Ukraine, Armenia, Georgia, Macedonia and Russia. He was a member of the Directors Guild of America and received prestigious awards such as the Clio, Billboard, Poly and the London International Advertising Award and the Cannes Film Festival Award. He lectured at Yale, at Columbia and at UCLA. He was predeceased in 2008 by his wife. He survived by his son and my friend Mark Galanti of Culver City, his daughter Beth of Santa Monica and six grandchildren. There'll be memorial service Saturday, October 19th at 4:00 PM at the Writers Boot Camp at Bergamot Station. Thank you.
God bless his soul. Members, Mr. Sidia.
I knew Sid Galanti, he was a one... I'm on? I'm always on. Thank you. Sid Galanti was a wonderful man and a great father. I knew Sid and Mark. He played an important role in American history. We heard about his relationship with Ed Murrow. He was the architect of Harold Washington's campaign and that extraordinary victory in Chicago at a time when few African-Americans were elected to any post, let alone leading one of the major cities of this great nation. There was a lot of racism that was involved in that campaign and he ran a commercial at the very end that was just extraordinary, changed the whole direction of that election and helped Harold Washington become the mayor that he became. He inspired a young man named David Axelrod and we know that David Axelrod played another role in helping elect another African-American to an important post. I got to meet Sid and Mark through Art Torres in 1993, '94, '95. We, the county workers, were having trouble communicating the importance of keeping the hospitals open and it was very difficult for us to get in the media, get on the news, make people aware that we were going to lose Martin Luther King Hospital, General Hospital, all of you, Harbor, UCLA, Rancho Los Amigos. And the entire system was in jeopardy. We sought out a consultation with Sid and he created a commercial that won one of those Clio Awards. And it was a commercial that talked about the impending economic doom and that we had to avert this economic crisis or we would end up like other cities and counties throughout the nation. He was a really, really remarkable human being. He did great work, as it was spoken about with Jane Fonda and Tom Hayden, but he did really great political work for Tom Hayden, for Tony Anaya, for so many giants in politics. He helped many of us whose ideas were considered very liberal and on the fringe, learn how to communicate those ideas in a way that's just more popular and effective today. He was a great man, but also knowing his relationship with his son, their company was called Galanti and Galanti, a great father and a really great humanitarian and he will be sorely, sorely missed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks.
Sure. I'd like to ask to adjourn in memory of veteran Colorado Public Servant Joseph B. Rogers, who at the age of 49 passed away unexpectedly on October 7th at Rose Medical Center in Denver. Joseph was the youngest American elected as a state lieutenant governor. Joseph was 35 when he was sworn as Colorado's lieutenant governor in 1999, becoming only the second African-American lieutenant governor and the fourth in the United States. 2000, he was the principal speaker at the GOP National Convention in Philadelphia where he and then U.S. Representative J.C. Watts unveiled an initiative to triple the number of black delegates and alternates at the next convention. He was, after George L. Brown, again, he was the second black elected official to join the lieutenant governor ranks of Colorado, serving until 2002. He also was the last person in Colorado to be independently nominated as a Colorado lieutenant governor, but thanks to long-fought issues with he and then Governor Bill Owens, the future legislation required them to run as a party. Joseph publicly criticized the governor for scheduling a youth summit after the 1999 Columbine shooting, which conflicted with a statewide celebration for the Emancipation Proclamation. He was born in Oklahoma, he grew up in Commerce City as part of his family. He spent eight years on welfare. He was a tennis team at Adams City High School and discovered his power for public speaking. During the public prep rally for the football team, Joseph grabbed the microphone telling the students they should care about teams other than football and basketball. He received a round of applause that actually changed his life. He's a graduate of Colorado State University where he majored in business. As a first-year law student at Arizona State, he won the National American Bar Association Negotiation Competition, joined the attention of many West Coast top law firms. As a new lawyer, he provided pro bono legal services in rural southeast Colorado and went on to practice with the prestigious firm of Davis, Graham and Stubbs and served as the staff counsel to the U.S. Senator Hank Brown. In private practice, he represented school vouchers, advocacy groups and filed a lawsuit to behalf against the Denver Board of Education. He served as one of seven members of the National Commission on Voter Rights and received the Trumpet Awards. The Time Warner Turner Broadcasting System honored him as the African-American achiever. He survived by his mother Lola, his wife Anita and three children and a host of family members. His services will be tomorrow at 11:00 AM at the Rising Star Baptist Church in Aurora, Colorado, and Heavilion State at the Colorado Capitol in the rotunda.
Members, this completes our adjournment. Every day is a blessing. Go ahead and serve the city well. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.